Hi, good evening. It is Wednesday, August 17th, and this is the Hatfield School Committee's August Monthly Meeting. I'd like to welcome our administration, our committee members, and esteemed guests. Nice to see some people in the audience. So, first thing on our agenda this evening is public comment. And I'd like to start by those who are in person, if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment. Okay. So, I know we have an Outlook link as well. Is there anyone online with us this evening? My screen isn't showing online.
It is not.
No, neither.
Oh, there is no one with us. Okay. So, seeing no public comment, we will move on. This is our first month. We've got a few new things that we're trying out, and we're moving to doing a consent agenda for things that are pretty performa. Is there a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda?
Or you do that. Maybe do you want to just explain?
Speak to what a consent agenda is? We sure can. So, it is very customary for organizations to use consent agenda for things that they're just trying to streamline and be more efficient. The items on our consent agenda this evening are our group norms that we did in our workshop, and the minutes for the July 18th meeting. Both will be available as part of the packet. So, is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Wood?
Sure. So, it's been a busy summer. We are busy figuring out our implementation plan for our K-8 curriculum for math, iReady. And Principal Petrow has been taking the lead on that and has been scheduling that. We'll have them here on the 30th so that they can present to our K-8 math teachers. We're also working on developing, further developing our literacy program, and again, we're working to hire a literacy consultant that would work with us throughout the year. That's part of our PD initiative this year in general, is that they're not one-shot deals. They really work with people throughout the entire year so that we can have implementation, collect data, give feedback, get feedback, and then pursue any changes that we need to pursue. We're also, on the 30th, have a trainer out of UConn for our multi-tiered system of support initiative. Again, this is looking at how to help teachers work toward supporting students, really in all subject areas, but mostly literacy and mathematics, and to look at ways to structure their lessons and their approaches to the organization of their classroom and small groups of students. And it's really, it is a K-12 or pre-K through 12. We're doing something slightly different for pre-K. And, but it's a K-12 initiative, so we'll have all of our teachers trained on that day. It's been around for quite a while, and so it's very important for us to really take a look at it and unpack it so that we can take a look at all the different instructional strategies we could be using in our classrooms and use them consistently across grades and between the schools. So, we are working on that. We're, the professional development plan in general is being fleshed out. These are three main cornerstone of it, but I also have listed the other elements that we'll be working on at Smith Academy. Dr. Driscoll can talk more about this. Collaborative learning. We'll also be looking at, just mentioning the things I haven't spoken to, our assessment model overall, again, both in math and literacy. Literacy and writing have been pretty well, or certainly, reading and writing have been pretty well developed. We're going to further develop them with ways to report out the data on a more regular basis to ourselves and to the public. And we'll also obviously be starting math as well with our program with iReady. That is part of the curriculum, so it's embedded, so we like that a lot. We'll also be doing more on students and staff safety training. We met as an administrative team with Chief of Police and Chief of Fire, and so we'll be looking at training for them. We've done it annually since I've been here, but we'll further do it with probably somebody from the state police will come and work with each team of staff and review our procedures as well as best practices that are ongoing now in the nation. So, that'll be coming, and we're hoping that we are able to get that particular consultant because he's very, very much in demand either in, hopefully in September, but maybe October before it finally has, it's done. We've had both buildings inspected. We have a punch list of items, relatively small items, but need to get completed before the start of school. I've met with the HVAC system people that have been working with the system over the last two, last few years, actually, and we'll be working with them to do a check-in inspection before school starts as well, so that they can make sure it's working, number one, as it should work and also at both schools, and also going forward to make sure that we have a good plan for communicating issues that arise so that we can stay on top of it for repairs. Talked about the security meeting. We are also, as part of that, looking at overall security. We've identified a number of different things that we feel we need to do. We are very fortunate to have this annual town meeting money that was established a few years ago, and one of the things that came up almost immediately was the fact that our phone system at Smith Academy, our teachers had no way of calling out to 911. So, we are looking at implementing a new phone system at Smith Academy. We are also looking at rekeying both buildings to make the system more efficient overall, but also just to give our teachers the opportunity for safety reasons, looking at ways that if, no matter where they are in the building, they can get into a room, because all rooms should be locked during the school day. So, this way, they can get into a room, if they're with their class, and they can get into a room and go in and lock it back as we go through. So, hopefully, that will be done before the start of the year. We expect it to be. The walkway is beginning. It is ongoing now. We did meet with the conservation committee. It did get flagged so that we could really maneuver around the wetlands. Dr. Driscoll and I and Mr. Genovese worked, walked the area. So, we're changing the path ever so slightly to respect the flagged areas, but it's just bringing it a little farther away from the area where we originally had intended, but it'll be, it's ongoing now as we speak, so hopefully, it will be done before the year is started as well. As I've told you, we're looking to regroup around technology, and I did get two proposals. I'm reviewing them both. I think one of them has, is more in line with our financial needs, and they're single-term contracts. In other words, they're one-year contracts, so we can easily regroup if we need to go in a different direction at the end of the year. The nice thing about both of them, because the proposal, the scope of work that I wrote for them, was that really kind of spelled out that we needed leadership, the areas of what we needed. We needed leadership. We needed help desk. We needed network support, and so the scope of work is, complements that very well, and we will be able to do that. So, I think that's the direction we're going to go this year, just because time is of the essence at this point, but also, it's the same, if it's the company that I plan to go with, if they agree to the terms, it's the same team that's working with the town. So, it'll be a nice compliment for that. The solar panels have been turned on, which is exciting. Hopefully, we will get our first bill in September and see what kind of savings we have. They've estimated that it will be, it's all about percentages, so it'll be about 60% of the use of electricity that we will be saving. That might not translate into exactly 60% savings dollar-wise, because our bill is kind of funky. We have something called cow metering on the electricity bill. Really got to unpack that and figure that out a little bit more. Working with the town on that. But, so, we'll see what our bills are and see if we can get those figured out. Family engagement, we're working now. Letters are going out. We have very shortly, I think they've gone out for Hatfield Elementary. They'll be going out shortly for Smith Academy. We have to do some reworking on our SIMs information to, it's called a rollover, to get the students into their new grade and the students who were here to exit. So, that's going to happen this week, and that will take care of that, and then everybody can do emails through Plus Portal. We are developing, and I still say developing, it's pretty possible, and I'll let Mrs. Petrow talk more about the before and after-school program, but we do have, we definitely have a before-school program. We have a after-school coordinator. It's all about hiring staff, and we'll work on that, we're working on that to do that. And so, hopefully, we will have everything in place as far as staffing. Information about that went out yesterday, today, yesterday. So, we should be in good shape to start the year. And I've been meeting with all the new staff. We've been hiring. I'll talk more in the personnel report. I think we're all done now with the high school, so that's good. We do have one special ed position still vacant. We had a candidate, and that candidate backed out after going through the hiring process, which was very unfortunate for us, and, but we do have a candidate that's being looked at, and then we are 100%, now we have a long-term sub for grade one that we have to hire because there's been a change, and I'll let Mrs. Petrow talk more about that. It's a very busy time at both schools.
Before we move on to our next report, does the committee have questions?
I have one, but I don't know that it's actually for you or for the principals, but I have been asked about the teacher assignment letters. If maybe you could just explain the rationale for the letters coming out now at this point in August, because people keep saying, "Why aren't they sent out? Why aren't they sent out?" They want to know, they want to know. So, I think I know, but maybe if you could speak to it for the public's knowledge of understanding why, that it doesn't happen until the middle of August.
Do the principals want to cover that in their report, maybe?
Perhaps, but I'm just going to express the question here, because you brought up the letters.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, we want to make sure the information is accurate as possible, as you just heard. You know, we have changes in staffing going on, so I think this was really the earliest we could send anything out that had as 95% accurate information about staffing as possible. And so...
That was my understanding of it, but I think sometimes the public needs to hear from, from the top. Thank you.
Is there anything, Adam, I don't want to, anything on the punch list from the reviews and the walkthroughs that you don't see being able to be completed before the start of school?
I don't think so. I think we're going to be in pretty good shape with everything. We do have, we've got to get some contractors here to do some plumbing. The plumber we worked with has gone out of business, so we have to kind of find somebody, and our facilities director's on vacation this week, so that might put us behind on those things, but that was an outdoor piece, not an indoor thing, so.
It's not going to stop the doors.
It won't stop the doors.
Excellent. And then, related to before and after-school programming, I appreciate that before is completely nailed down and after is, the most critical component is secured, which I think is amazing. Is there a contingency plan in the works that's running parallel? Should something need adjustment?
We, yes.
I'm in contact with the Henshaw Regional YMCA, and I have a meeting with them next week, because if, for two reasons. One, if we're not able to get staffing, then we still have families in dire need of having care after school, and also, you know, Julie is graciously offered to do both the before and after. So, you know, people are like, "Why can't someone stay later than 5:00?" And it's an oblong day for one person to be in charge of and have to stay for that many kids. So, we changed the pickup time to 5:00, and I do know that that's still a hardship for some families, so I'm in contact with the YMCA, not knowing if their program goes, any of the questions I have for them. If their program goes later, is it possible to get a van or bus to bring kids from our school to New Camden?
Gil Montague used to do that into Greenfield, so it's not that far of a distance. It's just a matter of having that conversation. So, there is, there is a plan and a scheduled time next week to meet with the director of the YMCA.
That's awesome, because I do know a lot of folks count on and rely on that program, and so I'm really, I know that you guys got left holding the bag a little bit. It's not that the school wasn't proactive at making sure the program was set up and established, so thanks for keeping on it, because it's really important that we have that coverage. Thanks.
So, my update is, it's kind of, so the summertime in a school is interesting, because you have, your planning for the year is, you have these two kind of pieces. You have like the view from 10,000 feet, and then right, you know, how are we going to keep the trains and things running on time immediately on day one? So, we've been working on both of those things at the, at the high school. Well, highlights from, as Michael said, we are, as of today, I believe, fully staffed at the high school, which is wonderful. We have some really, just really fantastic candidates coming in to replace folks who have left, so that's great. Michael talked a little bit about MTSS, and we'll be looking at that at the, at the high school level in terms of, you know, how our student support systems are in place for all students. So, students who are on IAPs receiving special ed services and students who are not on IAPs, students who are identified through the building support team, and students who self-identify as having, you know, struggling in a certain area, and how we can support them in getting what they need to, you know, to feel comfortable and to perform their best. We'll be looking at a lot of things that are currently done. We had been working for the last couple of years on project-based learning, which is a, you know, is a, is a tool of instructions, a really kind of broad, all-encompassing way to go about things. So, trying to narrow in on the, on the parts that we think will be most, most effective for what we do, and looking a lot at cooperative learning opportunities across disciplines, looking at, you know, what, what physical pieces might, might need to change or need to, need to shift to support that, and how we can, how we can as a, as a staff, support each other in doing a lot of that stuff. And then in terms of the nuts and bolts, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, reviewing safety procedures, as Michael said, looking at the handbook changes that exist, how, you know, what was, has been working the last several years in terms of what we've done day-to-day and what needs to, needs to shift. We have some ideas that came from last year for that. Looking at consistent expectations, we have a new schedule that's, it's on a seven-day rotation rather than a Monday through Friday, so students will see, classes will meet every six of seven days rather than four or five, so they get more, you know, more frequency with those classes. It'll also keep everyone on the same schedule, so it'll be middle school and high school kind of running at the same time, which will allow a little more flexibility in terms of what, what students will be able to, able, able to do during some of those classes. It'll bring back X blocks, two X blocks, rather than one X block, and it'll shift crew from what it has been, which is like a once-a-week kind of longer block, to a shorter advisory block, so it'll be called advisory, wait for 14 minutes every day, and just allow for kind of focused work with smaller groups, SEL work, so talking about goal-setting, what, you know, what students would like to, like to achieve through the end of the year, how to get there, if they're, you know, if they are struggling in any certain areas, and just team-building, you know, time for a 14-minute block that's designated for, you know, for building culture, which is something that's, that's really critical. And then looking at kind of how we evaluate our own performance as, as teachers, as in a school, and how we, how that will kind of, how that will kind of track throughout the year. So, as you can see, it's a lot to do in three days before school starts, but it's, you know, it's a springboard. It's not a, you know, don't just do it and kind of be done with it. We do it and then kind of try to set the stage for the rest of the year with it.
Questions for Dr. Driscoll?
The state said that they were going to raise MCAS graduation requirements?
They, they will, and that's, that's not for this current year. I believe that is, the first graduating class that will affect is 2026, I believe.
Okay.
And so, we have some time to, time to get used to and prepare for that.
Other questions?
To keep track with inflation.
So, you spoke about the support systems and the various reporting ways you can get in. So, if a student or a family wants to self-report, what's the process for that? How do they do that?
So, that's one of the things that we're going to iron out. We, you know, that, that process hasn't been completely fleshed out yet, but the idea is going to be to have a, almost like a tutoring kind of center that anyone can kind of take part in, and we can, we will hopefully have both staff and student tutors who would, you know, that would be maybe something that they volunteer for as an X block or a course. And then, you know, if a student's struggling and they just, I mean, it could be as simple as, you know, talking to their teacher and say, "Hey, you know, I'm really having a hard time with the Pythagorean theorem. Maybe I could get some extra help with that." And that could be a, you know, in addition to the pieces that are already in place, where we have staff staying after school to work one-on-one or, you know, in small groups with students and extra help, just another, another, another piece that we could put in place to help, just help, you know, help tighten that, tighten that safety net a little bit.
And the new advisory block, is that, is the cohort in each of those groups the same grade, or does it end up having a mix of students from different grades?
It's going to look like it's the same grade this year. We've been going back and forth, and I've seen both models, and when they, when they first designed crew, they had designed it for a number of reasons that are all good and valid reasons to be kind of grade-by-grade. So, we'll, you know, we'll keep it, we'll keep those, those groups sort of in the same grade that, and this is going to be the first year with that model, so if it, you know, going forward, we say, you know, "It'd be really great to mix it up a little bit and have wider groups." We can do that.
Okay.
But the, the biggest driving factor there was the, you know, the, sometimes the issues that come up in one grade level might, you know, they might not pertain across the board. There might be, you know, one interpersonal conflict that's a bigger group in the ninth grade, and then the 12th grade might have something else, you know, they might want to practice jolly ball or something, so.
And what are you most excited about for September 1st?
I'm excited to see the students again. It's lonely this time of summer in the school. So, yeah, I think, I think we're, we're in good shape for the coming year. I'm really excited about the, the new staff that's joining us. I think, you know, to a, to a person, I think they'll be really great fits with Smith Academy, and they'll really add to, add to what we have.
Okay. Who's on the agenda first? You guys are looking at each other like trying to arm wrestle who goes next.
No, she's totally next.
Yeah, but I'm like, "Oh, wow, I maybe should have put a lot more stuff into my report." I got to go up next, okay. Yeah, August has been a whirlwind, as it always is, and unfortunately, we did have a resignation of an interventionist, a reading interventionist, which is part of the reason why some of these letters might not be going out, because we've done some internal shuffling. So, Kim Robinson, second-grade teacher, has applied for and is interested in the reading interventionist position. She has a, she's certified for it and has been doing some of the OG training, so she is now our new reading interventionist, which meant that her position was open. The long-term sub, I get hired to cover Megan Wheeler's maternity leave, is actually also a certified teacher, so she was interested in that position, so I have moved her to the second-grade position, and now that leaves Megan Wheeler's position open. However, so Safa Yel, our second-grade teacher, Lisa Boucher is our art teacher, but is also in absence, I was not counting on until summer, and we are now still looking for a long-term sub that has been posted to cover Megan. So, I have a Plan B in case I don't have anyone, actually, I have a B and a C in case someone does not come forward to, to cover that absence from August 29th to December 3rd, but that's okay. Cross our fingers, somebody will apply. So, yes, building on Connor's MTSS, so I'm excited about the school year for two reasons. Not only are we going to reiterate, and again, not knowing how much MTSS experience our teachers have received in the past, this notion about really looking at small group instruction is a big focal point for us this school year. I am bringing in a consultant from the University of Hartford that I have worked with previously to talk about guided reading, which is what I'm looking for our teachers to utilize in small groups with students. Again, this is about our teachers really starting to identify and understand data and to begin really looking at the data tools that we're using for universal screeners and assessments for students, and to find out if there's gaps, and if there are, then we need to figure out what to do about those gaps, and then that's going to also affect our, I've applied for a grant today, I'm all excited, I'm hoping, cross my fingers, to get this too, about actually creating an elementary district, it would just be elementary, literacy plan. So, we have a really solid understanding about what, what is each grade doing and what are we doing if students are not having success in a reading intervention, what do we, what are our plans for those things? So, I'm looking forward to doing that. That's going to be mostly from kindergarten to sixth grade. Pre-K, we are actually bringing in a pyramid model, and that's going to be used with support with Marlene Robbins, which Molly has had experience in the past working with her in a previous district, so this will give a little bit of a boost to our preschool curriculum. Let's see, yeah, Julie Linneville, huge thank you, huge shout-out to Julie, for both not only taking on the box, fully staffed for the morning, and it's going to be offered five days a week, where previously it was only offered three. And the after-school, again, she's, I shouldn't say volunteer, she's being paid for, but she has graciously offered to be the site coordinator for this, and now, you know, she's been reaching out to Smith Academy students that she's formerly had, putting out that we are looking for people to support, because we definitely need to make sure we have coverage five days a week. So, as much as I welcome anybody who wants to come in, hint, hint, for anybody who's got some time, Mr. Keer in the audience, if you want to come and support.
Fully employed.
All right. But, you know, any kind of artisan residence type of thing, you have a hobby, an interest, a love that you want to share with students, I welcome, and Julie Linneville would love to hear from you. But yes, we do have a Plan B about working out with the YMCA if that's a need, or more importantly, if they're able to support families who need a longer duration of childcare than our 5:00 can, can provide. Again, iReady is coming in, I'm excited. I've utilized the program in the past just as a diagnostic. We've not, this is our first time I've experienced them as an actual math curriculum, but I also have staff who have used this in the past as well, so we do have some familiarity with this particular program. And I was just talking with our counselor today who happened to come in. One of the things that we were able to purchase at the end of the school year was Second Steps Bullying Prevention Unit, so we plan on implementing that with every grade K-2-6. It only goes up to fifth grade, but we're going to have the fifth grade and the sixth grade do the same lessons, so. And that's my report.
Questions?
I just have a question about the after-care. The enrollment for it, like do parents enroll for certain chunks of time? Is it just like, "Hey, this week, I need Monday to..." in for certain chunks of time, is it just like, hey, this week I need Monday, Tuesday, or is it, you know, for the next three months, I'm going to need this, or is it for the year I need this?
I think eventually it can be a little bit more flexible, at this point in time, we're just looking to find out how many people are in need of it, partly because we were trying to have more of like a 10-to-1 ratio, because we definitely want to make sure that we have enough staff that's going to cover students. But yeah, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, some families only needed childcare two days a week, they didn't need it every single day, so that, so part of the registration online was about how many days a week you needed it, and I even had somebody who had called in or, and said, I only need two days, but they change because my work schedule changes, and that's okay. Ultimately, though, we just need to make sure that I've got enough staff members, and we, we planned on about 50 kids on any given day, that might, that number might obviously fluctuate, but as long as I can have at least five adults, or at least five people, high school, to support the amount of kids that may potentially be there on any given day, Monday through Friday, then we'd be all set. So yeah, I think it can be flexible, there are some details still needing, you know, needing to be ironed out, because people are like, how are you collecting money, is it weekly, is it bimonthly, is it month, I don't know yet, we're still working on that, but, you know, I will get that ironed out between now and before school starts. The preliminary was more of like, you know, are you interested, do you need it, and then we can fine-tune the follow-up with, you know, individual letters to families that say specifically some of those details that people are asking about, you know, also, you know, contacts, who's allowed to pick up your child if you're unable to, those kinds of things. So, we know that there are some more questions that are, are being asked that are good ones, that we don't have answers for quite yet, but we will iron those out.
Okay. And the YMCA thing, it's, it's kind of, is ideally being worked out as like a, in addition to, for parents who need extensions beyond, but it could also be like a, everything blew up, this is an absolute fallback, that's the gist of it?
Correct.
Okay.
So I do want to see, because some families said, I can't do until five o'clock, I need something later, so I want to find out from them if that's an availability. So what I might be able to say is, if you can have childcare and only need it until five, we're the place you want to send your kid. However, if you need it past five o'clock and you can pick up your kid at six, I don't know what they would charge, I mean, those are other questions I have for them, can we, can they send a van or a bus, or can we bus our kids over there to support those families that need it? And if I, as much as I'm excited, and Julie is, you know, trying to desperately reach out to people who might be interested.
Good try.
I keep trying, Mr. Keer, I do. And I've even reached out to Parks and Rec about half-days, I mean, I know, you know, parents are still inquiring, what about half-days? We still need support on those days as well, so I've reached out to Parks and Rec to see if that's even an availability. And who knows, the YMCA might be able to do that too, but I, my appointment with them is not until next week, so I don't have hard and fast information, but I'm looking them, at them as a Plan B in the event that I don't get enough adults to say yes to staying in the afternoon until five o'clock, because then it's just not safe for kids, and then I'm going to have a lot of angry parents, but I want to be able to at least say, here's an option for you. But, we're working on it.
Thank you.
And the earliest possible date that a program would start would be the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Yeah, yes. And we will go right to the last day of school. So, I know that that was an issue last year with the collaborative, was they had college kids, and once those college kids graduated, they all left, so that really kind of curtailed our ability to provide after-care when parents suddenly were left with kids and we still had school. So, we will start it on the 6th, and it will go to the last day of school.
I really appreciate that you're looking for options on how to deal with half-days, because that's always a big challenge, and I'm appreciative for backup plans as well. That's awesome. The, I'm excited that our rec department might entertain help and support, I wonder if the Northampton rec department might also make your backup list, because they run pretty robust programs in those windows. Other questions? Okay.
I want to publicly thank all of our staff that worked in our summer services. It, as a, when I was a teacher, I, I worked every summer as well, and I'm aware of what that means, and so I really appreciate, appreciate all the teachers and peer professionals that came in this summer and supported our students in those services. When I wrote this, I said all our positions were open, but I am, I reposted the SLP position, but I'm hopeful we have some new candidates. In terms of, one thing I was thinking about that I didn't add, one nice thing, because of the schedule at Smith, we're able to bring back some co-teaching. So we had a number of students shift to more in-class supports during sixth grade, and when they go to seventh grade, we were able to continue that with co-teachings that have only pulled out. So that was a benefit to having all the teachers having the same schedule as well. For special programs, our new teacher, the STAR program, was able to come in and meet the kids and hang out with us on the last day of school, summer services, so I, we, that, that was great for, for her to meet the kids and the kids to meet her, and, and wrap her head around, you know, planning for the year. And we have accepted a couple referrals for our Smith Academy Step Down Program, which is one of our tuitioned programs, and we continue to review referrals for our STAR program down at Hatfield Elementary. For tiered focus monitoring, DESI update, I've been providing updates on our action plans, getting ready for staff PD on the, the couple of items that are on our corrective action, and working to update and just, in general, work on fidelity checks around our systems. And one of those things is, as you know, the dyslexia guidance came out last year, and we, I worked with the reading specialists, and we created that dyslexia crosswalk for Hatfield, and it's been on our website all year, and I've, I've updated it a couple times. But if you look at any of the other local districts, they don't have anything that's transparently posted on their websites in such a way, and in working with other consultants that a number of our families work with for, for tutoring or, or reading supports outside of the school day, we've gotten a lot of compliments on that crosswalk. But now this is a new year, so we're going to be updating it, because in our previous plan, we were going to have DIBELS 8 extend third to sixth this year, so we'll make that happen. We're adding in the DIBELS as part of our kindergarten universal screener, so improving the universal screening for dyslexia. And then, in addition to that, during the year this year, for our formal evaluations, we use two different across-subject and skill achievement evaluations, one is the Woodcock-Johnson, and one is the Kaufman. And our teachers who had a concern and wanted to look at specific scores related to dyslexia, we're using some research and guidance around just the Woodcock-Johnson, and we're adding the supplemental scoring for the Kaufman. So we'll be able to have a couple different ways to formally evaluate. So, you know, improving those diagnostic tools at all the tiers is something that we're working on. Childfind efforts, just a public reminder that if anybody listening or watching this later, if you have any concerns about your child progress, or child's progress or development, in any area or one area, please reach out to the school, we have many tiered interventions that we've been talking about, we also have our building support teams, and then the formal evaluation and referral processes, you can always reach out to me for questions. We will do those universal screeners, which is part of our Childfind efforts, and as well as the benchmark assessments. And then, for the federal guidance, the principals have been reviewing the discipline procedure for students with disabilities, they attended, they both attended a, a webinar the other day, and it sounds like things are pretty well-aligned already, but it was nice to double-check those. And circuit breaker, I did get confirmation today, went through, and I'll be doing the next grants when they release the grant books, and I've been in touch with other local districts if we have school choice students with special needs, just to make sure everybody's having the right responsibility, and, and that everything, everybody's being paid the way they should. So, that's my update.
Questions for Ms. Primner? You guys are chatty tonight. You mentioned folks can call in to the school if they have interest in screening, what age does that start? Is it school age only?
So, so no, so every, everybody is universally screened, so previously the system in Hatfield was to contact the school to be screened, but we're, we're actually have an obligation to universally screen everybody, so all preschoolers and all kindergartners, like we did last year, will be screened. We're adding in the DIBELS as a screener for the kindergarten right at the, the fall, which is, they used to just do it like mid-year, but we're going to do it right away. So, those enrolled kids, but also anybody who lives in Hatfield and chooses to attend a private school, or attend homeschool, we're, we're your school, so we, we can evaluate. And then evaluations for, for our little-ists start around 2.9, so a few months before they would be joining us. And I do encourage if your child is early, younger than that, if you have an infant or toddler and have concerns, reach out to your pediatrician and talk to, get a referral for early intervention.
That's what I was checking, sometimes people don't know all of that.
Yep.
That's great. And I, just clarifying, it sounds like specific for dyslexia and other reading issues, more screening and earlier screening.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay. So while it's not specifically on our agenda, because it's the summer and students aren't back, our student representative, Hadley Zinal, who wasn't able to be with us tonight, wrote in to share that they, they will be voting in a new student representative, so she's passing the torch, and she shared her update, so I would like to, since I was the one that got that, I will share with you, that, quote, "School is starting up soon at Smith, and exciting things will be happening. Sports preseason starts up on August 22nd for soccer, and August 23rd for field hockey. The girls' varsity soccer play day is August 28th at Smith Academy, make sure to be there and support the soccer team. Today, the senior class painted the demolition derby bus for the three-county fair. We had help from elementary students who were painting their bus next to us. It was a great time, and both buses turned out amazing. We're looking forward to the beginning of the school year and starting up sports and classes again." So, I wrote her personally, but I would like to say, thank you, Hadley Zinal, who was a fantastic student representative to us, and really, like, showed up and served the students well, and I appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing who comes next, I'm sure they will be amazing as well.
Can I add something?
Please.
I just, I wanted to share with the bus-painted day I forgot before, it was, it was just a really nice, nice day, and something really that I thought was, was, was nice and pretty emblematic of, of Smith and Hatfield as a whole, was, you know, the, we had the, the high school bus and the elementary bus getting painted, and a, a whole, a whole bus showed up to paint your bus, a busload of kids showed up to paint the bus and direct it, which was great.
Thank you, rec department.
Yep. And, and the seniors, you know, the seventh, they, they kind of had the seventh graders, the upcoming seventh graders come over to help them, so it's a senior class kind of fundraiser, that's what the demolition derby thing is, and so that, they kind of invited the seventh graders, upcoming class, into, to work with them on the bus, and I just thought that was a really kind of nice, you know, nice showcase of the community that we have.
It's nice to hear.
And in the future, when we do this again, because this was such a blast, when the notice goes home that says your child will get dirty, please take it seriously. Never seen so much paint everywhere, in hair, I mean, they didn't have enough, I mean, they weren't anticipating a busload of kids, so there wasn't enough brushes, so the kids got, I mean, they were literally our elbow-deep in paint, it was, they were like flicking it at the bu, I mean, it was, I just walked around laughing, I didn't want to take picture, I mean, I took pictures after the bus was done, because I just, it, it was, paint was everywhere, it was just so much fun to watch. And it's, the demolition derby is on Sunday, Monday, Monday, Monday at 2:00 on September 5th?
I think it's a different time with the high school bus.
Oh.
And I don't know what time it is.
Who's driving our buses?
Thank God it's not me, that's all I have to say, my family is appreciative of that too, I'm not sure.
I was like, Connor tried last year, I specifically remember, my son, my son did one year.
Really?
He used to, still got everything.
No, I meant as an adult.
Oh.
He's, he's, he's on the fire department, and he.
Yeah, I wasn't asked.
He wasn't a student when he did it.
But it was, it was a blast today, it was absolutely hysterically funny and fun.
So, thank you for sharing that about the bus stuff, I think it's a great example of, at least in, in my other world, working with nonprofits, we would call it a mission moment, so that, how our culture comes alive, and those little snippets, they don't need to be long, but I think it would be great if we make a practice of sharing those, so please don't be surprised if future agendas actually start with a mission moment, because it's building our culture, and, and appreciating some amazing things that we have going on, and it shows up in, in academic stuff, and it shows up in fun stuff too, so, thank you, it's a great example. So moving on, I believe, to contract votes, fun stuff, almost, almost as good as a bus. And I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to talk about that.
So we have two contracts to vote on tonight, the ESP contract and the HTA contract. I want to say how very grateful I was to work with both teams. It was a great experience, and both teams worked very hard since January, worked collaboratively, respectfully, and it was a good process, and we really reached a good place. I believe all, all parties are very pleased with the end result, and I can fully support these contracts, I think they are, you know, a, a very good result of our hard work.
Yeah. I will put on my budget Subcommittee hat and say, everything is within the budget that we have approved, and that took a lot of collaborative effort from the teachers, which we greatly appreciate, because, you know, we really want to make sure funding goes to kids as, and, and supports staff as well, and I think, you know, we asked the town for a lot, and the town really came through, and to be able to see contracts come through and, and make that all work is a lot of puzzle pieces coming together.
I also want to thank David Keer for his participation, which I felt was invaluable as the town representative, his background of being both an administrator and a teacher really was significant and helpful to all of us, I think, and so David, thank you very much, very much appreciated it.
And, and I, I share your appreciation for the teachers and what they brought to the table, and a lot of work on their part, because it's a lot of time and effort and attention, and thank you for being a great partner, so.
We, we had a great team, we all worked very well together, so.
And the cookies were great.
Cookies never hurt.
Cookies were wonderful.
Cookies never hurt. So I do believe we need separate ratifications, and most importantly, the HTA has ratified both contracts, and I would like to note, they were unanimously in support of the contracts. So, actually, before we do this, I just want to, as an unusual step, I would offer the floor to Mr. Keer if you had anything you wanted to share as a participant in the process. You're welcome to it.
You've got to sit in the jump seat, every time. No, I think, I think the process was good, it was, it was long, maybe a little bit longer than it needed to be, but it was long, and we got it done. I think the team that you guys appointed was, was an excellent team, and people who know, and Christie and Michael's ability to put the numbers together quickly whenever things were, at the end, especially figuring out what we could afford, or what you could afford, and that kind of stuff, and I think that was critical to the whole thing, so I felt like that So, I felt like that went well. I think I brought some institutional knowledge to the process, which probably helped. I think it helped both sides. I don't think it just helped the school committee side. So, we all know that insurance was a big topic of discussion during the whole thing, although it really can't be a topic of discussion, but that's for another day. So.
So, in two and a half years, we can call you again?
Well, that's up to the, that's up to the select board.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate it a lot.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to be made to ratify the ESP contract?
So, I'll make a motion to accept and ratify the ESP contract retroactive to July 1, '22, running through June 30 of 2025, as presented to us.
Is there a second?
A second.
I do believe this is one of those things that is a voice of a roll call. Correct? So, with great gratitude to our teachers and staff and our amazing ESPs, Boudreaux, I.
Inglehart, I.
Bench, I.
Sullivan, I.
And that passes. Is there a motion for the HTA?
I will make a motion to approve the HTA contract beginning September 1, 2022, going through August 31 of 2025, and to ratify and accept the terms as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Great. Again, with heartfelt gratitude to our teachers, Boudreaux, I.
Inglehart, I.
Bench, I.
Sullivan, I.
And we have contracts.
Wonderful.
Woo! Fantastic. Okay. So, moving forward, it's time to talk about policy. We have two policies to review this evening. And I just want to clarify, my assumption, and the policy committee, and Mr. Wood, you can clarify this for me, that the preschool admissions policy, this would be the first of three readings?
This is the first reading.
Okay. And the Title I, do we have a need to expedite the approval of this policy?
I would say yes, because I think we need to put it as part of our packet that we send off for Title I.
Okay.
What's the date?
And is it the recommendation that we waive the readings and move to a vote on the KBAAs?
Yeah, the Title I policy.
Okay.
Yeah, the changes were minimal. We would recommend waiving the readings.
So, given that that is the case, could we possibly swap the order of this and talk about Title I and move that forward quickly?
Yeah, definitely. So, Policy KBAAs, Hatfield Public Schools District Title I Parent Involvement had multiple references to the No Child Left Behind Act, and we are striking those references. And there were no other changes to the policy.
That's literally all it was, was just removing those references.
Which we need to do to be able to.
Right, it doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any conversation before we entertain a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept KBAAs as presented, with the changes waiving the readings.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
I. So, KBAAs, as it has been redrafted, is approved. And for our first reading, IHBBA.
So, Policy IHBBA is our preschool policy. We did receive some questions about our preschool policies, and also it was, it was time for a refresh of this policy. So, this one does have some more edits. We, as a policy subcommittee, received input from Superintendent Wood and from other leaders in our administrative team, just in helping us clarify the mission of our preschool. And we also made a number of, mostly, I would say, stylistic changes to clarify sort of our admission preferences, our admission policies, and how to register for the preschool, things like that. Tried to clean it up and make it more, more easy to understand. I think so. What else do you have to add, Kathy?
Yeah, there, there was a number of discussions about this. It's not anything that was.
Lot of discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of discussion and input about how this, any of the changes would happen or what changes would be made. It's not significantly different. So, do you want to talk about the changes? Or?
Yeah, we can. If you, do you want me to go through them?
That'd be great.
Sure. So, in the first section about preschool philosophy, we did, it was already written in the policy, but we did somewhat clarify that the primary, and this is out of our draft, the primary mission of the Hatfield preschool is to support and provide special educational services to children with identified needs, which is true of our preschool program. We moved a paragraph that was later in the policy and added it to the philosophy. So, that third paragraph, really, we just moved. Under the admissions policy, we did clarify with the regulations and with current best practices about our admissions age and how we determine when children can be admitted to the preschool. So, the line, as it reads here, says, "We accept children at least three years old by August 31 and less than five years old by August 31 to start preschool. Early admission at 2.9 is reserved for children with identified needs, as described in this policy." And then, we continued to clarify our admission process for resident versus non-resident children. So, as it already existed, it said, "Children must reside in Hatfield to be eligible for enrollment." But then later in the policy, in a different section, it provided some exceptions. So, we put those all together, so it's easier to see, that non-residents may be admitted on an annual space-available basis according to the following priorities. First, children of staff members. Second, siblings of current and returning school choice students. And we also clarified that non-residents must reapply to the preschool annually, and it does not guarantee school choice acceptance until kindergarten. Moving down our draft, we also, there was a whole section on twins and multiples, which we just moved to put into the correct place. And then, in the registration and tuition section, we just clarified how children actually are registered, and we had a lot of discussion about what we do when we have more applicants than spaces. So, we stated that children with documented special needs may be exempt from the lottery or referred from early intervention, which is true. Hatfield resident children currently enrolled will be given the opportunity to preregister. And then, non-residents must submit a new application annually. And just reiterated that we are admitting students according to the priorities in the policy. We set an application deadline of April 1, and outlined a lottery process for any remaining spots. I think we just moved the tuition sentence. We moved it. Is there anything else? I think I just went through the changes that we made. Kathy?
Yeah, that was pretty much all of it, just clarifying the, the payment needing to be in by August 1. And then, to be, do an advance on the first of the month thereafter. So, one of the changes that were, I don't know if it was actually a change or just a clarification, that non-residents must submit a new application annually. This came from a discussion of wanting to prioritize meeting the needs of our Hatfield families first. And so, if a non-resident was in preschool last year, their spot isn't guaranteed this year if there is a resident need, because we wanted to make sure that we were servicing our Hatfield residents.
Okay. So, hypothetically, there's five open slots, and kids that got, non-resident students that would like to come back a second year are back reapplying for those five spots. Are they on equal footing with every applicant that's a non-resident? Or if you've been here for a year, and there are still openings after all the residents are accommodated, is there a priority for them? Or are they?
That's, that's a really great question and why we're reading the policy.
That was a scenario that we came up with in the discussion, but that is a very good point.
Our conversation had sort of focused elsewhere, but I agree, that's a great point. Because we.
So, that's something you guys can come back and share, just from a customer service standpoint.
Totally.
I, I do understand the desire to make sure local students get in. That's key. But if there's going to be openings, and you have 10 kids, and that kid came here last year.
Totally.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll wait till she finishes writing. Okay.
Just writing my notes.
2.9 is two years and nine months, right?
It is.
It would make my brain so much better if we could say two years and nine months and eliminate 2.9.
Just to leave you, it's any question.
We certainly can do that.
And then, I have a question about the primary mission statement. Just, "The primary mission of Hatfield preschool is to support and provide special educational services to children with identified needs." I would imagine that is certainly one of our goals or one of our missions, but not the primary mission of the program overall?
Well, preschool is run a little bit differently from the rest of the school.
Right.
So, we did receive a lot of input.
It is actually an integrated preschool.
Yeah.
The, the primary purpose is for us to have a modeled preschool to allow for our students with special needs to have their needs met. And then, for us to have, and being a model program, we want also typical peers to be a part of it. So, we then add typical peers. So, it really is primarily there at the first get-go, but we need both.
Okay.
Right. And this is also why, when we talk about our admissions, you know, children who have identified needs are automatically prioritized.
And then, the non-resident thing, just to clarify, so the only two ways that someone can get in as a non-resident is if they're children of staff members or if they already have an older sibling who's choiced in? Those are the only two?
No.
That was just according to priority.
Right.
That might need to be.
And I think there needs to be more there, yeah.
Clarified.
Okay. Because that's, that's how I read that, but.
Yep.
Yeah. I agree.
So, non-residents could just enter the lottery regardless?
Right. So, there.
Okay.
So, it says, one, children of staff members, two, siblings of current and returning school choice students, and then it would be like three.
Like any other non-resident.
Just open lottery.
Well, and so, I guess that answers my question, if that's what that means, and returning. I would enumerate those separately, if it's siblings of current school choice students.
No, I agree. We would just.
I'm not, because I read current and returning to mean the siblings, specific to the siblings, not to the returning preschoolers.
Oh, so do I.
Back to the hypothetical.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we'll clarify the list, which is why we made it in a list.
Molly.
So, it can be clear.
Just so everybody is aware, every year, we, I reach out to the early intervention folks. And in order for them to give me numbers, the parents who reside in Hatfield have to indicate to early intervention that they have an interest in the public preschool. So, I do get some numbers, but it's, they only have an obligation to really start that conversation with parents six months before they turn three. So, obviously, that doesn't quite cover the school year, because we may have some kids join us at their third birthday or so from early intervention. But they, we do have like a prediction. So, you know, the trend has been two or three. So, this year, we, we kept three slots for what we anticipate might be early intervention student needs. So, we do have our slots, but we also do reserve a couple based on trends.
That speaks to one of the questions I've had. And does the policy, what's the thought about, does the policy need to set any sort of guidance on, and it probably would be on a per-classroom basis, how many, how many kids in a classroom we would take? And how do we reserve? Like, what's the ratio of keeping open slots to fulfill the mission of supporting those students?
So, it's not just mission, it's regulation. So, there's, for 15 students in a preschool, the way it reads, which I think is always funny, is you can have six or seven, not seven or less, but the way it reads, six or seven, it's a sticking point with me, students with disabilities. And you do have to have a pair in the preschool. And, or you have to have a bigger, a different, look at a different model, which would be substantially separate preschool, which would be just for students with disabilities, which would be a lower number. I think it's 10. So, we do the 15, because that's the integrated model, at any one given point in time. So, we have these funny schedules of two days, three days, five days. But any moment, we have up to 15 slots. And then, within that, think about who currently is identified and making sure we have a couple more slots for anticipated referrals through early intervention.
Do we need policy to be expressed in terms of the number of slots? Because the number of slots we keep open is not directed anywhere, is it?
Right. It's really dependent on early intervention. So, policy really can't dictate it. It could say.
No fewer than or no more, like, it could give you some.
But it can't, because if early intervention.
I'm talking about the slots we keep open that we don't fill.
Right.
Right. That's the early intervention slots.
Say we suddenly had a family with quintuplets that all have needs, that are going to turn three, like, then we would, you know, that year would be bigger.
Automatically be in. Yeah, that's not the question. I think I'm, I'm really looking at, okay, we're going to have 15 per classroom. We've previously made a decision whether we're having one or two classes, so that's kind of happens at a different place. And so, we get X number of applications. We have guidelines that say, here's who gets in, in what order. What is the guideline that stipulates, yes, there's 15 slots, and here's who's the priority? And we know we need to hold a space if someone moves into the district, if, like, if needs change. What is the guidance in terms of how many spaces get held open? Because that is, that is potentially a student that doesn't come in to, because we're holding that spot.
Right.
So, my question is about the hold once the year gets started.
So, it really has to be guided, and we could put this in policy, it has, it has to be guided really by what our history is and what we can get out of EI for information. So, EI is very tight-lipped, to say the least, and not just in our catchment area, but across the state. So, they will not tell you if you're going to get five or 10.
Until when?
Until the parent gives permission.
Until the parent gives permission. They don't legally have to tell us until three months before.
Okay. So, that gives us a date.
With parent permission.
With parent permission.
With parent permission. So, all of it is, is parent-guided. So, and, and they have their own regulations under DPH with, with early intervention. So, we, we can look at census. That's one thing that we look at and say, you know, actually, we're going to have these, it looks like we have like four or five kids that are going to turn three during this school year, and, and, you know, make sure that we're promoting. And, you know, make sure that we're promoting our child fine, we're talking about it constantly. But, you know, we, one, we really encourage families to, even if they're unsure, to let reach a criterion or whomever their early intervention person is, to contact us, to, you know, at least explore the option of public preschool. But some parents do not make that decision until the day before their child turns three and early intervention is really going to end. So the model that all districts try to use is what is the kind of average and do we have any absolutes? We know we have three referrals for November, or we know we have one in May. And what can we do there? But there's some pretty solid historic data that there's been two or three referrals throughout, you know, that turned three during the school year for the past few years. And we're actually doing really well with our ratio because even if a child started preschool and wasn't in early intervention, but through our screening process, we realized that actually they do have a need or a disability, that's going to switch them to that ratio of six or seven. I don't know why it bothers me so much. But, so, you know, we make sure that we, we're actually really safe in that here in Hatfield, that six or seven ratio. But we really do need to keep open a couple slots because we can't go over the 15.
I don't have a problem keeping open slots. I have, I'm challenged for us to make sure that we're being really transparent with families, that it's clear who gets in, in what order, how many slots, and how they're filled, and if there are spots being held open, that that doesn't feel an arbitrary kind of thing. And so how do we specify that that's part of the process, that there will always be a need because of this? And how do we quantify it in such a way that it's not arbitrary? Because I'm not accusing administration of being arbitrary, but the way things read right now, that doesn't clarify anything.
I think if we added language, just almost as you were speaking, simply to explain in the policy that the final count of, or final makeup of the classroom will include reserved spots for early intervention based on census or census data or, you know, some other pieces or historical data. So that it's clear that, you know, we do have to reserve those spots and it's going to be different every year, but those are the criterion that we're going to look at.
And that's great because it also gives future administration a roadmap to say, these are the things we have to do before we go to the lottery. I have a question about who we accept. So I understand at least three years by August 31st, that's very clear. Early admission, once we change it to two years and nine months and make sure that's clear. Reserved for kids with needs as identified, that's clear. When we say that they're less than five years old, is that only if they're first time starting? Because I think we have had kids that stayed in preschool because of their needs, that they stayed in that classroom longer. Is that, are we saying that that's changing?
A little bit of a, it is changing, yes. That is not a practice that we would support.
Okay. Was that, you guys talked about that?
Just with the administration.
Okay. And as you guys have talked about it, what happens if there are spaces open as the year goes forward? So the practice, because it hasn't been spelled out well, the practice has been one thing. What will the policy spell out going forward? What's the recommendation?
Policy does state, actually it's under the registration and tuition piece, so it probably should be moved. Children on waiting lists must re-register for the following year. And then it also says children on waiting lists will receive consideration for slots that become available during the school year. So children on the waiting lists are children that have met the criteria from above of...
So you're not, okay, I just want to be super clear.
That should move up.
Are you on the waiting list if you are not three years old, but you turn three years old in the year?
No. It's applicants who met the criteria as stated above there under the preschool admission of at least three years by August 31st and less than five and meet the guidelines for everything else. So if we had only five slots and seven applicants, so two don't get in, those two are now on a waiting list. And if some, those two, if a slot opens up in the year, would have an opportunity.
Only if they met the qualifications.
If, because they're on the waiting list.
So here's where I start to struggle if we have openings. If the spots open and a kid does not, isn't three years old by the 31st of August, but is three years old on September 1st, and there's a slot open, and it's a tuition-paying spot, and we're financially responsible individuals here, how, what is the thinking behind not taking students who historically would have matriculated in mid-year when they met the criteria?
So where I would go is the same rule of, for kindergarten. Just because we have room and they're now five as of September 2nd, we still don't accept them.
We really think preschool and kindergarten are equitable in that regard.
Well, they're equitable in terms of trying to be consistent with how we approach the decision-making.
So if you let somebody in before they were three by August 31st, they would have to do a third year of preschool instead of joining kindergarten. And the administration wanted to keep it cleaner of having the admissions stay the same, the cutoff.
Did you guys look at any historical data, just to take a look back to see what our vacancy rates have been over the last decade or so? Like have we ever had room that we didn't fill and get tuition for?
Historical data is very hard to get.
I appreciate that greatly.
Very hard to get. I mean, you have one year. Did you, in the last year, I mean between the two, did we have any vacancies? I think, I can think of one vacancy, but...
This year and last year, it's tough to compare because it was a different model altogether.
Sure.
I don't think we had a vacancy this year. I'm not sure.
We had...
15.
Yeah, we wanted 15 in each classroom. We started off with having 30 kids, that met the criteria that we're not going to be in classrooms simultaneously, so it would be about 11, 12 kids each. We've had since a couple of kids who have not. They've chosen to be in their home schools or hometowns or childcare because we were kind of not being able to provide that in a timely manner. So people were like, I found something else. But I think our number's at 28 or 27 right now?
Most current is 29.
29, okay.
And for last, this time last year, so one full year ago, we had, we did have fewer than the 30. We, I think we had, I think it was like 23 or 24. But we had, we had more, that's why we decided to do two classes, was because we had, we had so many on that, on that waiting list and on that, that we decided we would have two preschools.
That cleared the waiting list, right?
It cleared the waiting list, but because we weren't, we didn't quite have 30 on the waiting list, it left us with smaller numbers this past year, which it sounds like this year we're covering up for that or recovering from that.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm looking at the policy not about this next year. I mean, and let's just be really clear, we have a policy in place that we've been following. It will continue to be our policy until we approve this. So I think the current practice stands for now. Am I correct in that administration?
Well, the policy stands for now.
Yeah. So I'm just looking down the road, if we don't have all the applicants, do we want to leave ourselves some opportunity? And I get that it might, you know, they might be in preschool for three years. I'm not sure I understand the detriment of that per se.
There are some instructional and developmental concerns. So for instance, at the beginning of the year, we universally screen all the preschoolers. So that happens right at the start. And we don't have batteries that go lower than that. So we'd be kind of having, we'd be having what would be considered a peer model starting mid-year that is significantly younger than all the other peer models. And it, we'd have to rescreen them. It gets pretty complicated, it's actually quite complicated when the EI kids transition in. It completely changes the culture of the classroom and now we have a new kid we are teaching new routines to because preschool is all about teaching routines. So there are some developmental and instructional concerns with having a more fluid year than is required by regulation, if that makes sense.
I hear that.
I have a question. So like currently, if you're in pre-K, if you're in pre-K this year and you want to come back for a second year of pre-K, you're guaranteed that slot. You don't, you don't get lottery your second year, right? So if you come in...
Unless you're a non-resident.
Right, yes, thank you for clarifying. But if you come in, when you turn three in the middle of year, like, you know, if we're looking at opening that up for someone who turns three in December, say, that could, they're getting in when other kids didn't qualify and do they get, would they get a locked spot in the next year, which would have been their first year? And that would have, that will block out, so they get to jump the lottery?
They wouldn't get to jump the lot, I mean, if they're Hatfield residents, they would be getting priority anyway.
Sure, but some years, like Hatfield residents get put in the lottery. So if they're going to be returning now because they started in November, because they turned three in November, the way you're suggesting it, then would they not, would they have an unfair advantage over families who opted not to join mid-year when their student turned three?
Yeah, there would be a bit of a pileup, potentially. We have, we have like a perfect amount of preschoolers in Hatfield, so they're like, you know, we don't have the waitlist, we don't, we're not dealing with all that. But you're right, if we had suddenly a flood of numbers and we did some poor prediction or something changed, a big family moved in, something happened, there might be a pileup that would not have happened given the traditional two-year model.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm scanning to find the spot again where it talks about what happens when we have more residents than space. Somebody tell, I'm just looking quickly.
I don't think it addresses that.
It just says that if there are more under registration and tuition, more applicants and available spots, students will be admitted according to the priorities outlined in the policy, which we've talked about some potential edits to that, that's fine. And then a lottery will be held as needed in April and grouped by priority. So if we like had enough Hatfield students to fill every single spot and more, then we would put Hatfield students in a lottery.
And that would include everybody who had been there before?
Well, that's the part that we had to clarify.
Because the lottery generally hasn't included students who've already been.
We didn't write that out in this draft.
Well, that's why I'm asking what happens with that. I mean, you know, God willing, we have that many Hatfield residents that come to preschool because that would go really well. It's a problem I would like to manifest.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if you're already in as a three-year-old in that first year, you're in for the second year as a Hatfield resident, so...
Actually, you know what?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It just, actually... Yeah, it does say Hatfield resident children currently enrolled will be given the opportunity to preregister. So yes, you kind of go ahead of the lottery. For currently enrolled Hatfield resident children, what we hadn't said was what happens to currently enrolled non-resident children.
No, we did because...
We did.
We changed that.
We talked about revising that.
So I just feel like if we opened it up to students who turned three during the year, we would have to perhaps make it clear that in that circumstance...
Reapply.
Yeah, you're not guaranteed anything in the following year, but in your third year you are.
I really, I'm not pushing an agenda per se right now. I just think it's worth really being clear on and making sure that we've... I appreciate the policy, you guys had this discussion, I'm sure. I want to, I just want to understand it, particularly with the revenue-based side of it because...
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about...
There is some chronology to think about. I mean, if you, given your example, I'm going to go with your example, we have a preschooler who turns five September 1st, and we have a Hatfield resident that turns three May 1st, then you have a child who's almost six with a child who just turned three. Is that a developmentally appropriate parent?
I've experienced that, our first year of preschool, really like...
It's actually great.
Almost exactly. So it personally worked out really well for our kid, but that's not what I'm here to look at. So I'm listening and I hear that there are concerns for that. Quite, personally, I don't equate it entirely with kindergarten because it's more universal skills and that group becomes a grade and moves on and, but, okay.
I think from our family's experience, I know like, not this past year, but the previous year, when Owen's class was only four, but then for the last couple of months of the year, they're like, and here's kindergarten. And they just threw it all together, but like, it worked. Owen and the other preschoolers blended well and they were all having lots of fun and he can still rattle off the names of every single one of them.
They blended kindergarten with preschool?
Yes.
For the last couple of months of the full COVID year there.
Oh, it was more, it was like March, it was like March to June. I thought there was a pretty big window of some of that. For COVID reasons, we did, we had no, like, we really stretched the ways we looked at opportunities.
It also happened long before that as well with my incoming sixth grader, when she was in preschool, there weren't enough to have a full second preschool or a full second kindergarten. So it was a combined kindergarten preschool class.
Yeah, I mean, with the, so I certainly value multi-age teaching. I was a multi-age teacher myself. And there could be ways for us to group the students so that they are as close in age as possible. So I mean, it's definitely doable in that, in that sense of things.
So, you know what, it's a first reading. I suspect we will all have an opportunity to hear from constituents and that's why we have three readings, right?
Exactly.
So, you know, I'm personally happy to hear from anyone that wants to come raise their voice. It'll be make sure that we can answer questions and make a policy that fits our town and fits the educational criteria our kids deserve too. Like that's, all of that needs to come out. So is there more discussion around this tonight? Principals, is there anything you guys would like to add? Having any perspective that didn't come up that you're like, oh, they really need to talk about this?
No, I mean, you pretty much covered it. You know, it's being new to not having ever dealt with preschool and kindergarten, you know, it's been a learning curve, so, but again, you know, the helping it be really crystal clear will be very helpful for me and being able to answer questions when parents are coming in and calling, so I welcome a clear policy.
Yeah. It's just one that it's like, this is a tender moment for any family, right? It's a lot. It's, it's a lot. Applications due on April 1st, is that the standard for the area? Did we double-check if that's...
We tried to align it with our school choice decision-making.
Okay.
For families with multiple children.
Makes sense? Okay. Adam, anything else you want to?
I think I've said enough.
Okay. So when would you guys like to have that come back?
Depends, I think, when we can schedule our policy meeting.
Our next meeting's on the 18th of September, so we should be able to have the policy in between.
Okay. So that would be a second reading. So folks, if they don't come and speak to the committee, which you're all obviously welcome to reach out to, we would anticipate public comment might have some of that next month.
Yeah.
And with that, we will move on to our handbook review and approval. We have seen some of this previously and had a fair amount of discussion about the Smith Academy handbook, some about HES. We are looking for approval and votes on these tonight, so that they are ready to go, obviously, for the 1st of September. Mrs. Petra, would you like to speak to any changes that you would like to highlight that happened in the HES handbook?
From the last time you met?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I did change the pickup at dismissal. I heard from some feedback when I was not able to attend, that there was a concern of the way the staff had asked and recommended that we'd, they go back to, which was an older policy where the parents parked and came into the building. I heard that was something that the school community members were still kind of hesitant about, particularly around building safety. So I did change that. We will go back to having a staff member stand by the community garden sign with a walkie-talkie, parents will drive up, staying in their vehicles. And so I rewrote all of that out with the help of the staff member who had been previously doing that particular role, because I know that that was a big concern of staff, was that there was a lot of, it seemed that there was a lot of duty coverage and the need for the amount of adults. So we kind of also minimized the amount of staff that needed to actually participate in that, because it doesn't really need to be four or five people. It literally could be three. I mean, one person standing by the door, one person at the door, and then the person in the cafeteria who's got the walkie that, you know, says the names of the kids, so that by the time the adult is, you know, picking up, is there at the door hypothetically, and hopefully it'll work, but the kids are standing right out there, ready to, getting picked up in the car and moving along. So it seemed pretty seamless last year, so I'm completely on board with, with continuing that, so I rewrote that dismissal policy.
I know the parents really like that method.
Yep, that's fine.
That might be the one silver lining we take away from the COVID era.
Yeah. Yeah. So that was the biggest change.
Questions from previous rounds that might still be outstanding?
No, on the handbook, I'm good.
Dismissal on early release days, is it 11:55 or 11:45?
I was basing that on previous information, and I had it in the, when the calendars was 11:55. It has been a moving target.
I know, I, I feel like it...
Every year? I'm, I'm...
If we can just stick with one, and stay, I'm happy whichever one it is, but I just want to make sure that it is well-publicized what it is, so everyone knows.
And that it happens at that time, and that it's consistent.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, in terms of, of piggybacking, we can't go any earlier than 11:15 at Smith Academy. And 11:15 to 11:45 is, that's tight for the buses, because they have to do the Smith routes and then get back to elementary school. So those, those 10 minutes would be highly beneficial to the bus drivers.
So right now, they have 40 minutes, so they need 40 minutes on a half-day too.
Right.
On a regular day, excuse me.
Okay. So 11:55 is the half-day?
Dismissal.
And I apologize, but I happen to be very...
It's a gift, don't apologize for a gift.
I, I notice typos everywhere, and this is just kind of, she calls my eagle eyes. I just noticed stuff like that. So I can just send you a little email of things that I noticed, because they're not substantial, they're just little things that I, like, just one example is Riley's email address, her last name is spelled incorrectly. So I mean, just tiny little things, and Kathy sees it all.
There's a floating period somewhere.
That's not bad.
I used to do proofreading for an insurance company, so I've just kind of like trained to see those things.
That's great.
It's a wonderful superpower. Thank you for using it to our advantage.
I've reread this thing probably at least 20 times, and still...
And then you stop seeing it, I get that. So please don't take offense at it, that I noticed these things.
No, no, I appreciate that. Because let me tell you, I asked Riley again today how to spell her last name, because I spelled it wrong. So this is a good thing. See if I can fix it now.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the HES handbook? I will make the motion to approve the HES handbook for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Smith Academy handbook, any changes? I saw that you, it was like, Conrider Schools made an edit, and I was like...
The, I, the, the changes that we made were the pretty small things we talked about last time, and also just to make sure that all the, everything was updated, names were updated, policies were actually reflective of current policy, because some of the, a lot of the policies are just kind of listed off and, and put in the appendices here. And so some of those hadn't really been updated in a couple, a couple of years, but the policy had been updated, so we went through and checked those. So the information should be correct, and a huge shout-out to, to Ms. Jackie for checking on all those and doing, doing all that, because it's tedious.
I don't think so.
They, they don't link currently, but we can, we can, we can fix that.
Be an easy thing. That would save people a lot of time.
Yeah, we can also bookmark within the document, turn the contents into a clickable table of contents.
Those are, well, those features if you're going through a big document. Any questions on Smith Academy handbook?
Your, on the website lists staff, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because I know in the HES handbook, there is a listing of staff members, which I thought was nice, but yours is on the website.
Yeah, we can update that, make sure that we have all of our, our new hires and current folks up there.
Good reminder for the website update period, especially with the letters coming out.
And I imagine the student body will be very happy with the dress code policy changes.
We'll see a few hats, I think.
Is there a motion on the table to approve, edit, amend the handbook?
I'll make a motion to approve the Smith Academy handbook for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous as well.
Awesome.
Okay.
So you were saying that the link, we're going to try to work on getting the links.
Yeah.
Would that mean then...
It doesn't have to be 121 pages long.
Right, like, all these policies that are references...
We can link it right to the actual...
Right, because these handbooks are not printed, right?
Yeah.
No, I, yeah, I think having the policies in there is kind of a relic from when they were printed, and they just, you know, found and...
And they'll just update it on their own.
Maybe we can do that with, with both handbooks?
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
What's, yeah, so we now have a tech person to...
Okay, that's automatic, you don't have to re...
Yeah.
Don't have to go back to it.
And then if, yes, if there's any changes, it's done. Just be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Well, that completes our schedule. I know that we have, I will just mention for the sake of folks tuning in, that we have made an effort to set dates for future meetings, so that we have them spelled out. And those are Tuesday, September 20th is our next business meeting at 7:15, so a little tweak there, a little change, here at Town Hall. October 18th at 7:15, and then we switch back to Wednesdays. And the Wednesdays would be November the 16th, December the 14th, January the 18th, and February the 15th, all of those at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
Just to clarify, only up through November have been confirmed for Town Hall?
True. But, but we're at least on Wednesdays at that point, and that's...
They shouldn't have any issue.
The town calendar doesn't go that far. So likely also Tuesday, September 13th is a backup day that might be a workshop meeting. So it would not be a Town Hall meeting, it would be working on district improvement plan goals. So...
It's the 13th?
13th of September. Is that definite that we're going to do that, or? No. Okay. I'm just keep, I just want it on your calendars, so that it can still be an option.
What was that date again?
September 13th.
Okay.
It was one of the backup Tuesdays that everyone had clear.
So I already said yes?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Hold me to it.
We're stuck with it.
So, okay. I appreciate you all greatly for joining us tonight. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Indeed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
What would happen if there's a...